Have a quorum. Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am Chair and Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We are here this afternoon for the following bills, and that's Bill Number 21-0117, and Bill Number 21-0122, and 21-0123. As a courtesy, please turn on your camera if you are able when called upon to speak. In attendance today, we have members of the council, I mean, members of the committee. Councilmember John Bullock, Councilmember Ryan Dorsey, Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Antonio Glover will not be joining us today. He is excused. I'm just checking to see if I missed any other members at this time. And checking to see if there's any other council members that are not part of the committee. And I don't see any. Members of the Office of the President, we have Nikki Thompson, which is Director of Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And also Lucy Font, Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And... Let's see. And I don't see Matt. Representing the Mayor's Office, I see Natasha Miho, Director of the Governmental Relations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Matt Stegman has been added. He's the Director of Fiscal and Legislative Analysts.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized. When recognized, please identify yourself in the agency or organization that you represent. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. And let's begin, and we're starting with Bill Number 21-0122, Franchise Installation of Five Utilities and/or Duck Banks. For the purpose of granting a franchise to the Johns Hopkins University Developers Agreement Number 1710, to construct, use, and maintain five utilities and/or duck banks subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on September 13th, 2021. This bill was sponsored by the Council President at the request of the Administration for the Department of Transportation. And this is in Councilmember Ramos's district, the 14th District. Would you like to comment, Councilwoman?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair and Committee. Johns Hopkins University is building a new Agora. The full name is big, so I'm just going to refer to it as the Agora Center. And it will be a research center for social services and policy. So it's very... And it's going to be an innovative building as we know it. It'll be located on Wyman Park Drive and Rummington, right there where the old... Just next to the old Wyman Park Hospital. And so the bill is actually to have a developer's agreement between the city and Johns Hopkins University because they need to use the public right-of-way on Wyman Park Drive and also put in, you know, various utilities, et cetera, and use part of our conduit there. So that's the gist of it. DOT may want to add a couple more details. I'm in favor of this opportunity for our district. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now... The committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with the city solicitor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Vic Turbolo from the City Law Department. We are prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Victor. And then we'll go ahead with the Department of Transportation. And I see Liam Davis.
Madam Chair, DOT stands by its bill report, which is in support of the legislation. I just wanted to mention that this franchise agreement will last approximately 25 years, and we are recommending to the Board of Estimates an annual franchise fee of $910.
Okay. Per...
Per year, per year. Annual, yes. Per year, $910 per year. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the committee? And I do see Councilman Robert Stokes has joined us, which is also a member of the committee.
Thanks for recognizing me, Council President. I've been here from the beginning. I don't know you much.
Oh, sorry.
Must not be working.
Sorry, I missed.
Thank you.
The Fire Department. Any representative here from the Fire Department? Natasha, is there anything from the Fire Department?
Good afternoon, Vice President Middleton. I don't believe we had anything from the Fire Department right now. Still waiting on that, but the Administration supports the legislation.
Thank you. Department of Planning.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Committee, Eric Kiso. For Planning, we have no objection to defer to Transportation.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions for Planning? Hearing done, Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Parking Authority Baltimore City.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Christmas Age from Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report, which is to not oppose the passage of this legislation.
Thank you. Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for a note, this bill will be sent to the Board of Estimates after this hearing. Do the committee members have any comments or questions at this time? Hearing done. The committee will now take public testimony. Computer users, please use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name. Telephone callers, you will be unmuted one by one. When you hear two beeps, you unmute yourself. If you do not wish to testify, please say so. If you do wish to testify, please state your name. And so now we're checking. And there are no hand raises. So now we're checking for the callers. S. Marie, did you want to testify on this bill?
No.
Yes, go ahead.
It was a no.
Oh, you said no. Okay, sorry. Moving along. Okay, that's it for callers. There... So there has been no testimony for callers or hand raised. Any questions from the committee at this point? Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Ramos. Is there a second? Second by?
Conway.
Aye, Councilman Conway.
Hello.
Second by Conway. This bill will move favorable. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Glover has an excused absence. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. And just wanted to again say that this bill will be held for a report from the Board of Estimates before it is placed on second reader. Since we have Matt Stegman here, you just want to... Matt, could you just explain that procedure to the committee? Because a number of things, I think now that are going to the Board of Estimates, we just... Could you just go over that explanation? Because I think that's a new... Kind of a new procedure. And I guess I just want to reiterate how important it is that it's kind of added also on the draft agenda for when... Or somehow if the council is... We get notification that it has been heard in the Board of Estimates as well. I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. But if you want to just quickly explain that to the committee?
Sure thing, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity. Matt Stegman from the Council President's Office. The... So there are certain bills that usually... Things that have a... That are like contracts or that have a fiscal impact. So franchise agreements and developers' agreements are good examples. Those will be approved by the Board of Estimates. And it actually... Traditionally, I believe that has happened between second and third reader, not prior to second reader. So just again, there are certain bills that because of the Board of Estimates role in setting the fiscal policy for the city are referred to and approved by the BOE before they're subject to final council approval.
Madam Chair, can I... This is Vic Turbolo from the Law Department. Can I expound on what Matt was talking about?
Yes, please.
There's a charter provision. Article 8 of the city charter requires franchises to go to the Board of Estimates. And it's typical that it goes typically before, between first and second reader. After the committee hears a bill, it typically goes to the board at that time. Occasionally, it has gone later, but usually it's between the committee hearing and the second reader. And at that point, the board is responsible for actually setting the fee that's charged for any franchise. And whatever fee the board provides or decides will go into the bill on the second reader.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Just kind of educating the committee so everyone is on the same page. Does the committee have any questions at this point? Okay, let's move to the next bill. Number 21-0123. And thank you both, Matt and Victor, for that explanation. This bill is another franchise underground conduit and fiber optic cable for the purpose of granting a franchise to the state of Maryland, the Maryland Transit Administration, to construct, use, and maintain an underground conduit and fiber optic cable subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was also introduced on September 13th, 2021. And the bill was sponsored, again, by the Council President at the request of the Administration for the Department of Transportation. And this is in Councilman Isaac Itzy Slyfer's district. I didn't know if someone from the Office of the President had something to say on this bill? Or should we go ahead and move on to committee? The committee can hear from the agencies.
We're fine to let the committee hear from the agencies. We introduced as a councilmatic courtesy, and we leave it to the experts to share more of the specific details.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start again with the city solicitor, Victor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, the Law Department is prepared to approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And the Department of Transportation, we have Liam Davis and David Fram.
Yes, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Thank you again for allowing us to discuss this bill today. We stand by our bill report, which is recommending support with amendment. You should have a minor technical amendment on your desks or in your email inbox with some language that corrects the number of the developers' agreement referenced in the bill's text. So it's really just a technical...
It is in the pack.
Great. So we're recommending support as long as that gets corrected. And just some general comments. This is another 25-year franchise agreement. It is with M.MTA. Typically, in working with the state of Maryland, in particular with MTA, we normally waive franchise... Waive the franchise fee. So that's what we're recommending here. In the event the Board of Estimates didn't want to waive the fee, we would recommend a fee of... An annual fee of $3,380. So per year.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions to the Department of Transportation? Moving on to Planning.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair. Kiso for Department of Planning. We again have no objection and defer to DOT.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock with DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this legislation.
Thank you. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age, Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report. We do not oppose the passage of this legislation.
Thank you. Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. And the Fire Department. I think there was no representative, but can we have a statement from... Representative from the legislative office? Confir that either Natasha?
Yes, thank you, Council Vice President. We have no concerns on behalf of the Administration and the Fire Department. We are fine moving forward.
Thank you. And again, this bill will be sent to the Board of Estimates after the hearing. The committee will now take public testimony, and we're checking to see if there's any hands raised. And I do not see any. Do we have... We're checking for callers now. No callers. And no public testimony. There... And yes, there are amendments to consider to this bill. The Department of Transportation offered a technical amendment to correct the developers' agreement number. Is there a motion to move the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
I move the amendment.
All those in favor, say aye.
I'll second it. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, is there a motion to move the bill?
I move the bill as amended.
Thank you. Conway and Ramos. And this bill will move favorable with amendment... Within amendment. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilmember Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Glover has an excused absence. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Thank you. This bill will be held for a report from the Board of Estimates before it is placed on second reader. And now we'll go to the last and final bill, Number 21-0117. And this is an ordinance termination of administrative parking regulations, peak hour parking restrictions for the purpose of terminating peak hour parking restrictions on the 100 through 800 blocks of East 33rd Street, also on the 2700 through 3600 blocks of Hill and Road, also on the 3300 through 3500 blocks of the Alameda, and also on the 2500 through 3200 blocks of Lock Raven Boulevard, and also on the 2900 through 4300 blocks of Greenmont Avenue. This bill was introduced on August 16th, 2021. And the bill was sponsored by Councilmember Ramos. And Councilmember Ramos, would you like to comment?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for your time, Madam Chair and colleagues. This legislation came because we received a lot of people interested in keeping the peak parking restrictions that were... That happened during the pandemic. Remember during the pandemic, the Parking Authority and... I'm sorry. The DOT was not ticketing for people parking. Were home. There was no reason to do that. And recently, in August, the restrictions were lifted. And I received a lot of emails and phone calls from constituents across the district to keep those... Get those back to where they were during the pandemic because people enjoyed not having to move their cars. But more importantly, how slow the traffic was. And we want to put this in as a traffic calming measure. I did get feedback from across the district. And you'll hear from a couple of people today about this. We... I've asked Madam Chair not to move this bill today, and you saw that in my testimony and in my email from this morning because DOT has actually been doing a very extensive study of the peak parking restrictions. And I wanted to give them an opportunity to finish that up before passing the bill. Again, this is the restrictions on parking between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. or 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Because what happens is rush hour. Typically, there's more cars during that time. So people move their cars between those hours. And what this bill will do is to remove that. So no one has to move their cars, and cars still continue going down the road, but have to go slower because they need to avoid those parked cars. So again, you know, one of the biggest issues in my district is traffic calming. So this is one way to do it. And I'm very excited to put this forward and work with DOT on the next steps. And I am hopeful that the result of this process will also provide all of us with a process to go through if we want to remove or add peak parking restrictions across the city. So thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. Happy to answer any questions. And I look forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Do committee members have any questions for the Councilwoman?
Yes, I do, Council Vice President. I sit on the Parking Authority Board. So I think this question is familiar for Ms. Hillary Ruley. Because when we come to the time to vote this out, and we sitting on the Parking Authority Board, I want to make sure I'm being careful. Whether I'm abstaining or I can still vote on it.
Councilman, you can still vote on it. You sit on the parking board as an ex officio member, so that would be fine to vote on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The committee will now hear from the two agencies.
Madam Chair.
Let's see Dorsey's hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. I... Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have any question. I just want to kind of express my real thanks to see this bill coming forward. And just as background, remind folks that we did some of this last term as well. Councilwoman Clark and I actually both kind of co-sponsored bills to do this. We have, at this point, eliminated virtually all of the peak hours parking restrictions throughout my district as well as a long section of my district where it borders with Councilwoman Ramos's district and extending further south into more of the 14th District in the Coldstream, Homestead, Montebello neighborhood. And that's been a real success throughout the... Particularly the Hartford Road Corridor where we did that, as well as along the Morgan State Campus where now not only are students able to remain parked during hours when they might otherwise be in class, but restricted from parking. But also, those parked cars create a real safety barrier between high-speed, fast-moving cars and the people who would be walking down the sidewalk during those hours, during rush hour. So I see this as an extremely beneficial bill and one that has a long history in Baltimore. Many years ago, there were peak hours parking restrictions along the north-south corridors in the center of the city, like along Calvert Street. And I think it was about 20 years ago now. It was kind of a big fight over the idea of eliminating those peak hours restrictions, kind of like the sky would be falling if we did that. And as it turns out, I think there's nobody along Calvert Street who would go back to the way that it was today. That it has turned out to be extremely beneficial in creating safer traffic conditions wherever peak hours restrictions have been lifted. And just in general, the mindset that I bring to this is that peak hours parking restrictions send the message that we are creating conditions for two hours of the day that we would not create for the whole rest of the day. Basically, that we create extremely unsafe conditions for the part of the day when people are most vulnerable and most using our public right-of-ways in a way that we don't during the hours when people are using them less. So I'm really thankful to see this bill and to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee will now hear from the two agencies, and we'll start with the city solicitor's office.
Aye, Councilwoman. This is Hillary Ruley again. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. And the Department of Transportation.
Hello, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. I just wanted to say before I get started, we're also joined here today by DOT Complete Streets Manager Graham Young, who will be... If the committee would like, we have a short presentation to kind of explain where we're at with our ongoing peak hour study. So we kind of offer that up. But I just did want to kind of summarize where DOT is coming from within our bill report. Generally, it's really not something... The agency is not really a huge fan of when kind of agency operations are dictated via legislation. But, you know, we understand there's always going to be times where that is a possibility. And when these cases do arise, we really do appreciate when the council member or legislator is willing to work with us. So I do want to give Councilwoman Ramos kudos. She gave us notice of the bill before it was introduced. Prior to the bill hearing, she was willing to meet with us and hear us out. She was very receptive to our proposed amendments and even offered to introduce them today. So just having that working relationship helps us kind of all achieve the broader goals. So our position today officially is recommending that the bill be amended to change the effective date from 30 days after enactment to six months after enactment. And essentially, what that does is it just gives our team enough time to really plan and implement any changes to peak hour, ample time without having to scramble... Ample time without having to scramble, ample time without having to kind of push other priorities aside. So we just wanted that, we wanted that window. Graham will be talking a little bit more about this in detail. And I know Councilman Dorsey also, also covered it, covered the topic. But we are monitoring the city's existing peak hour restricted corridors very closely. We have the active study underway. This all ties into our Complete Streets efforts. There's going to be areas where the report likely recommends, recommends removal. There might be other recommendations where not necessarily removal right of way, or right away. Because that could impact the future installation of, let's say, you know, a bus lane or a, you know, bike facility, or it could actually impact existing bus or truck operations. So we just need to be very, you know, thoughtful about how we approach this. And again, I just want to thank the councilwoman for being a team player throughout this process. With that, I'm going to hand it off to DOT Legislative, or excuse me, DOT Complete Streets Manager Graham Young. Graham, show yours.
Madam Chair, if I may, just before Graham go, Mr. Young goes. Mr. Davis alluded to the amendments and Ms. Coats put them up briefly. Two of the amendments are adding a couple of blocks into this bill. So you see all these numbers, all the renumerations. And also adding a couple of blocks. And then at the end of Amendment Three, on the next page, is the amendment that DOT offered. And I went ahead and added it to this entire package of the, moving the enactment date from 30 days to six months. So you'll, you'll see that there. I went ahead and, and added it in. So we have all of the amendments in one package.
Thank you. And I just want to add, while we're on these amendments, I think a correction amendment needs to happen. I think it's on the original bill, page 1, line 5. The word "lock" is spelled wrong.
Oh, thank you for getting to that. Thank you.
Yeah, it should be L-O-C-H, since this is a legal document.
You know what? Ms. Coats pointed that out to me earlier and I forgot to add it into the amendment. So I, I apologize. And since we're holding this bill for now, I'll just put it in for next time. Yep.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Coats did send that to me and I forgot to add it.
Okay. Are there, for the committee, do you have any, any questions at this point?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess if I could just one more point on my kind of past experience with this, it's wonderfully echoed here. Is that when we, when we addressed this subject last term, we tried to work with DOT for quite some time in advance of the introduction of bills and ultimately were not being heard. And really only put the bills forth to kind of force our point. And it was only at that point that DOT came to the table, really willing to be a partner. So I just want to recognize how improved the relationship with DOT is and how significantly more open to this kind of partnership the department has become in recent years. In, in that there is a clear and earnest and meaningful effort being made here to address these concerns. And that this bill is not being put forth merely as a kind of threat. Ultimately, last term, the bills were, I don't believe even ever heard, let alone passed. Because the, basically the threat of legislation was enough to get DOT to do it voluntarily. So we're, I'm very happy to just see how different things are at this point in time. And I just felt it was important to share that and the credit to, to DOT that is due. Thanks.
You're welcome. And just as a matter of record, we do have a letter of support for this bill from the Guilford Association that was dated 11/10/21. And on that note, Graham, you're on.
Afternoon, Madam Chair. I believe I need sharing privileges for this presentation.
Okay. Jennifer, she's there.
He's working on it.
Okay.
All right. Looks like I got it. Let's see. Right. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Graham Young. I'm the Complete Streets Manager for DOT and I am also managing this project. Which, what I'm showing you today is just a consultant's presentation that is developing, going through this process of our reconsidering peak hour restrictions. So I'll start by talking about just some, a peer review of other cities, what they've done. Some before-after case studies on, in Baltimore where we removed peak hour restrictions. A decision tree we're developing so that we can make informed decision on removing peak hour restrictions. And sort of the, seeing what, I guess, a prioritization of what can we just pull up tomorrow with no issues? Versus what's a more in-depth process. And then a evaluation of the 14th District corridors. So the primary reason for removing peak hour restriction, or peak hour parking restrictions, is really safety. In general, like the councilwoman was saying, what people saw when the peak hour restrictions were removed is that in some cases there is reduced travel speeds. You can reduce the crossing distance for people crossing the street. And just in general, quality of life for residents. In some cases, there's reasons to retain these peak hour restrictions. There's a lot of transit-heavy corridors where there's just high bus ridership. And buses often suffer the most from peak hour, or peak hour restriction removals because they have to pull over to load, unload, and then get back in the stream of traffic. So, and also there's some concerns about throughput inconsistency where you may go from two lanes to one lane, to two lanes to one lane, and so forth. So, one of the big examples of where we moved, removed peak hour restrictions was Maryland Avenue, when we put in the cycle track. This, we removed peak hour restrictions, we made it just one lane for the majority of the segment. And then two lanes and some others and removed many of the peak hour restrictions. In general, the volume, traffic volumes did not go down. They stayed about the same. And the crash rates went down drastically. Travel time went up slightly, but not too significantly. I think anyone that has seen Maryland Avenue since the cycle track was put in and the peak hour restrictions were removed knows that that's probably a nicer street to live on than it was prior to the removal of the peak hour restrictions. Greenmount Avenue, sort of south of the 14th District into the 12th. We did remove some peak hour restrictions there to put in this mid-block crossing you see, or uncontrolled crossing. And what we looked at there, we did see a decrease in some traffic volumes. In general, travel speeds went down a little bit. The reliability on the corridor went down. So, you know, if you're expecting a bus to arrive on time before, after, when we removed these peak hour restrictions, it did show that that reliability decreased. So things weren't quite as predictable. There was a slight increase in bicycle and pedestrian crashes, but we don't necessarily think that's related, you know, correlation doesn't imply causation all the time. So what this study is focusing on is providing a decision tree for us to make sort of easy decisions for, yes, remove this. And then highlight the harder decisions where more work will be not, need to be done. Outreach to residents would need to be done and so forth. So, what the decision tree looks at is sort of three categories. A likely yes, as in remove the restrictions tomorrow. Start from yes, which is, this looks like a good idea. And then a lean no because of a number of reasons, like there's more than nine buses during the peak hour. Transit ridership makes up a significant portion of the throughput on the street. Maybe we don't want to do that just now. There's some safety implications like, you know, curb lane widths. Or just, in some cases, streets that people generally will not park on. Even if those peak hour restrictions didn't exist. Because one condition we don't always like to have is where you have multiple through lanes and then there's just one vehicle that's there and people swerve around it, merging issues. Ideally, that would be a calmer street and people would be comfortable parking there, but that's not always the case. So these three categories that we establish are sort of metrics to identify yes or no. Another thing that we're really looking at is identifying what we call modal priority. Is there a dedicated bus lane planned or a dedicated bike lane? So when we look at our Bike Master Plan, we may not want to just remove the peak hour restrictions on some corridors, give people back full-time parking when we're planning on coming in within the next couple of years and saying, just kidding, no parking at all because we're going to put in a dedicated bus lane or we're planning a cycle track. So in some cases, it may be beneficial to transition from the peak hour restricted parking to that more permanent dedicated bus lane or bike lane. If that's in one of our adopted plans. So when we look at the proposed removal of the peak hour restrictions in the 14th District that are outlined in the bill, what we look at is a, I'll just start with eastbound, or I mean, East 33rd Street. Here you can see the restrictions are generally 7:30 to 10:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening. You do have Union Memorial Hospital along this. There's currently four travel lanes during those peak times. What we can see here is sort of just an outline of the, what was analyzed in this study. So this would mean two lanes in one direction to one lane. There's nine weekday peak hour buses that have a potential ridership when full. 486 bus riders per hour. And you send again 152 potential parking spaces. So this, the volume of traffic is 665 vehicles per hour. And when you run that through the, this decision tree, you get concerns about the, the transit ridership is one. And then the emergency vehicle response to Union Memorial Hospital. So, you know, that may just be around that block that it would be of most concern, whereas other segments we could be more flexible on. Hill and Road, this is a, the peak hour restriction just exists in the southbound direction. This is in the bill. The data shows that, yes, permit full-time parking. This looks like a good idea. Transit ridership is generally low. The potential for safety improvement is high by creating a full-time parking lane in that southbound direction. The Alameda is one corridor where again, transit ridership is relatively high. 12 peak hour buses per, per hour during the weekday. So there is the potential to adversely impact bus ridership. But then there's also the, the note that off-parking or off-peak parking utilization is low. So even during, when people are allowed to park here, I think generally houses have driveways or people park on side streets. So that would be one corridor of concern. And then I'll move on to Lockraven Boulevard. This has relatively low bus ridership. In general, the, the segment is relatively small. So in this case, we would say the study would recommend permitting full-time parking. Then Greenmount Avenue is one where we look at that modal priority. There is a dedicated bus lane planned. This is a priority corridor for MTA since the, the red line for the bus is one of the highest ridership corridors. So when we look at the impact of transit and the potential for a future peak hour dedicated bus lane or peak period or full-time if on certain segments that don't have high utilization of the curb. This is one corridor where we'd say transit is really our priority and we may not want to can remove the peak hour parking restrictions here. So that's the, sort of the summary of this process that we're going through. The next steps are really DOT will receive an entire map of the city that outlines every peak hour restriction or every corridor that has peak hour restrictions. And then the pure, the numbers game. So, you know, based on the criteria that I was explained, where does each corridor fall on that in terms of impacted transit ridership? You know, the safety benefit, things like that. And then the DOT, we will go through each one of those corridors and come up with preliminary recommendations. You know, we will, there will have to be much more public engagement. And outreach around any changes that we make to these, whether we retain them or whether we propose to remove them. With that, I'm open to questions or anything else.
So I just have two quick questions. Are you the go-to person if other councilmembers have questions about streets like this in their district? Or are you reviewing all of the streets in the city?
So the study reviews all of the streets in the city. I would say still go to Liam Davis as the primary point of contact. But the study will include every street that has a peak hour restriction on it. A peak hour parking restriction for the purpose of vehicular capacity. So there's, there's often some, what's misconstrued as peak hour restriction when really it's a street cleaning restriction or it's a loading restriction during certain times of day. What we're focused on is the peak hour restrictions for the rush hour vehicular capacity.
I would say that the first thing that comes to my mind in my district is Rice's Town Road and Park Heights Avenue with all the residents and how they got to move their cars. And then my last question, are you adjusting traffic signals as well when you make these changes? I'm sure you are.
That would be one of the main recommendations. In some cases, there aren't any changes necessary. You know, it, just Hill and Road, for example, you know, it's down to two lanes anyway by the time you get to the intersection. So changes wouldn't necessarily be needed. But yes, that is something that would be a recommendation for each corridor.
Okay. Do any other committee members have any questions for Graham?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to get a copy of those slides.
Can, can we, can the committee have a copy of the slides, Graham? You can send that to Jennifer. And then she'll distribute them to the committee.
Graham, you can just forward it to me. I'll make sure it gets to him.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chair. What, Mr. Young, what is the timeframe for completion of the study? Not just in my district, but citywide?
So it looks like the consultant work will be done within the end of the year. So they'll finalize their recommendations for that are based on primarily numbers, whereas DOT will want to take that study and then refine it to have our recommendations. And that's anticipated, I think, by around March, that we can have our final recommendations. Based on, you know, it's, it's a lot of anecdotal evidence, just knowing the streets. evidence, just knowing the streets, going out, doing fieldwork, looking at these corridors. And then, you know, not, so it's not just a numbers game. The consultant, we wanted, we needed all the numbers compiled so that we had a good starting point and then we'll refine what we think is the best path forward.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Hearing none. Is there a motion to move the amendments? Oh, we're not, you're not going to do that.
We should wait till, yeah, because I think based on the study, we may have more amendments. And I've also invited some of, but I haven't talked to all of my colleagues who are, who border my district to see if they wanted to participate in this. So I, I think we might have some more amendments later, if you don't mind us holding those.
Sure, sure. And I think I announced the work session at yesterday's council. Did I do that?
That was a different, that's a different hearing on homelessness. Yeah, so we haven't announced it yet. We have to work with DOT and your, and Ms. Coats and yourself on the calendar.
Gotcha.
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Stokes. I just want to thank Liam and Graham for some of the traffic calm they did actually in the 12th District bumps up against Councilwoman Des's district. Community is very happy about their traffic calm. So thank you guys. Keep up the good work.
Yes, it's working. Thank you.
So Graham, just one more question. Do you think that, or someone from the Department of Transportation get answered? Do you think that you're going to, or maybe a comprehensive bill is going to come forth before the council from your agency?
I don't think that, Graham, correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't think it's legislation is necessary for DOT to implement changes. I think that, I think the director technically has that authority.
Okay.
But we can check.
Okay. Just wanted to make that a, you know, matter of record.
Yep.
Any, any last questions for committee members? All right. Well, we're now going to go into recess with this.
Madam Chair, we do have some public testimony.
Oh, that's right. I'm moving ahead. We don't see any hands raised, one hand raised. Joshua Ritter.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't know how to turn on my camera, so I apologize.
That's okay. We hear you loud and clear.
Okay, well, I want to thank Councilperson Ramos and Baltimore City, as well as the Department of Transportation for working towards safer streets, safer communities, and a more pedestrian-friendly city. Ending peak parking restrictions that we noticed during the pandemic. Certainly in my area, the 4,000 block of North Charles Street has calmed traffic and made streets and communities safer for pedestrians. On North Charles Street from Overhill to just before where I reside at the, from Overhill to the 4,100 block, the peak parking restrictions were ended a number of years ago. I don't recall when. And then it kind of skips our area for about four or five blocks. And then when you get to University Parkway south from Johns Hopkins down to 29th Street, they ended peak parking restrictions when they did the significant changes to North Charles Street at that point. For some reason, from 41st Street down to University Parkway, there continues to be peak parking restrictions, both northbound and southbound, northbound in the afternoon and southbound in the morning. And it makes it actually even, from my opinion, even more dangerous that this happens. It's almost like a funnel. Everybody goes from one lane and then for four or five blocks, they get two lanes and they kind of jockey for position only to have this funnel close again. And that seems to make the streets less safe, certainly for pedestrians. So we do hope that at some point, I know it's not in the legislation now, but we certainly hope that these three or four blocks or five blocks from 40, the 41st, 4,400, 4,100 block of North Charles Street down to University Parkway is afforded the same safety and not only safe for the community, but also safe for pedestrians. And also that, you know, I was listening to the presentations today, it seems that what many, perhaps many years ago, the city had made a decision to make it more convenient for people who live outside of an area to be able to perhaps get downtown or to get home from downtown, but at the expense of making it inconvenient for those people who do reside in the city. So we certainly look forward to hopefully that that area also being included in the peak parking restriction removal in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. And you just made me think of something. I guess I asked for the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos. I know that the department planning was not asked to come to this, but I know that part of their goals and mission statement is for a pedestrian-friendly community. And maybe at the next, at our work session, they could come and bring some of their ideas as well. If you're, if you want to add that.
That's a, that's a great idea. And we should have referred the bill to them and we didn't, but that's a good idea. I'll go ahead and take care of that. Thank you.
All right. Now we're checking to see if there's any callers. No callers. So we had that one testimony and any further questions from the committee or anyone else? Any final statements from Transportation? Before we close out? Okay.
I just wanted to thank, just wanted to thank everybody again.
You're welcome, Liam. So we're now going to go into recess with this bill and I would like to thank everyone for attending today's hearing and have a nice day.